Now I'm nervous.
We're in the public hearing first before we start the campaign. Sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You got our excellent interview today?
Yep. All right, so our first order of business before we start the campaign to stand up and do pledge is we have a public hearing for Chapter 60 of our zoning ordinance, building construction. Some context here for the public and for those of you there is, Tim, can you be honest? We did a little bit of work, our code enforcement officer kind of spent a little bit of time digging through our existing ordinance and stuff. And there was a need to sort of level set our fees. So at our last meeting, we had taken up order of business to adjust our fees to the transfer station, make them a little bit more in line with neighboring towns. And this is a similar exercise for code enforcement, permits and fees and all of that, to make them a little bit more aligned within line of local areas. This, however, is part of the ordinance and it's the need for a public hearing. Did I miss anything? Any other context? Right. Does anyone from the public have any comments on the proposed amendments to Chapter 60 building construction? The council has that in common.
Actually, I do have a question. Yeah, I don't have to state my name.
Yeah, if your name is out of the question.
Melissa Costella, I live on Boyd's Corner Road.
Okay.
When it comes to code enforcement, after somebody pulls a permit for any kind of new construction or old construction, is there any follow-up on the actual construction that was performed? Because what I'm saying, and this is sad, but there are a few, I don't want to call them dishonest people, but when they go to build, when they go to pull an apartment, they might not be truthful with what they're actually constructing or enhancing or restoring. So I was just wondering if we followed up on any of the stuff that's being built or... And a prime example is people will tell you that when you're adding a room to your home, don't tell me you're putting another bedroom, tell them you're doing another living room. Because if not, then your tax assessment is going to change because you now have a three-bedroom home instead of a two-bedroom home. So I'm just wondering about the follow-up with our, our code enforcement program.
Yeah. Tim, is that something that you can take?
Yep. So, yeah, depending on what the permit is for, depending what the construction features are, by the international building programs of course, right? Where we regulate by in the, the main building area, we've got the certain specific requirements. It's more for newer homes, not so much for general reconstruction, but there are follow-up permits. So newer homes, it's a lot more detailed, foundation, wire, plumbing, framing, insulation, so forth, all the way up to get to your structural occupancy. With home reconstruction, not so much. And for instance, so we don't, we won't legally come asking to knock on your door and go looking at your house and see if you built a bedroom or living room. We tend to be, we're not a citizen not lying on a permit, tell us. So one of the things we do do, I mean, obviously, so we catch it in a couple of places that the assessor goes through and checks yearly, you know, annually or every couple of years and tries to see, you know, if you pull the permit, they'll follow up. Then the assessor will follow up with you and say, did you complete this? Is this room done? And we can't tend to the tax issue until it works completely. So there is follow-up, not so much on regular heavy construction. And we can't detect when they're being honest or not honest. We hope they're being honest, we, we hope they are, but, you know, people are doing that, that's, that's what they're doing. But we do more with new construction than just regular, with that in.
Absolutely.
However, nothing concludes here if you're mad at your neighbor, I don't know, I advocated that. If you call, if we get a complaint, all complaints are follow-up. So any complaint, those are code officers, is follow-up. So if someone called and you said you were building a living room, it's an odd home, you're actually building a bedroom. They would come over and ask when you were in, so we'd like to see this space. So we do follow up on complaints, definitely.
Does your comment matter?
Yes. Under the application for building permit, there is a list of required inspections. And only those setback distances for property license foundation, two, foundation, dies plug waterproof applied, foundation drainage required, before backfillment condition, framing before installation, sheet rock, rough plumbing, pressure test, insulation, and then the final inspection for an occupancy permit before occupancy structure. So there are those six items that are, keep a look at my business, I just did a volume, asking a question.
Thank you. Any, anyone else have questions, comments? All right, we can go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:30, 6 p.m. Thanks, everyone. And now we can all rise to start the actual conference.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public where we stand, where we stand, under our individual liberty and justice law.
Thank you. We have a full council this evening, it's from Andrew's here, Fred's here. And our first order of business is approving the minutes from our ordinance assessment meeting on August 9.
So the board of assessors is the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will move to accept the board of assessors reading minutes from August 9, 2022.
Motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor of signing the minutes, say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion back to the chair.
Just for, I was waiting to see if anybody had any questions or concerns.
Got it. Any questions or concerns for our next order of business, minutes from our meeting on August 9? The edits aren't very good.
So I'll move to accept the town council minutes of August 9, 2022 as written. Second.
Motion of the second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion back to the chair. Next, we have signing our treasure warrants. Looks like we have one still from fiscal year 22, right?
It should be the last one.
Yeah. And we got $16,705.32. That's our first warrant.
So I'll move to signing the treasures warrant. $16,705.32 dated 18, 2022.
Good motion of second, thank you. And again, this, we think should be the final warrant from this year.
Comments, disliked the last one. Who wrote this to staff? And we got our information that was distributed by the finance director. Real good with revenue last year, but I get the exact number of what it was.
Over eighty thousand for the revenue.
Over, and then through to like $300,000 and change for...
Under unexpected.
So as far as the budget process goes, that's pretty much spot on. To be able to commit at 2% consistently underneath is a fair assumption and following up on that, it's great. So thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion, and then in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of signing this treasure warrant, say aye. Aye. Any votes? Motion back to the chair. Next, we have a warrant dating this, this is for fiscal year 2023, the amount of $192,427.82.
Madam Chair, we will be signing the treasures warrant, the amount of $192,427.82, 89 cents dated 18, 2022. Second.
We have a motion of the second, any... All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any votes? Next, we have presentations, our traffic study from Sbaggo Technics. I'm assuming you're here for Sbaggo Technics. So I'll just lay a little bit of groundwork. So we, back into, I can't remember the year, so when, when was this completed, created?
2010.
2010. In 2010, Sbaggo Technics completed a traffic study for us that we recently requested to have them update that. And that's what we're going to talk about today. So, I don't know, Tim, should you start or...
Well, all, so all of the dudes, this is Nikki Conant. She's one of the traffic engineers who worked on the project for her, and there's another member from our team. They came down and already met with us and presented the, we had the initial kickoff meeting. And myself and Jen, and the rest of the group that was there, we felt Jay and so forth, it was important that they come present to you guys and get a lot... So you and the public get the same information. So it was just a short presentation and I, I was very, very impressed with what they gave me back for answers. I shared some of that with you, but I'll, Nikki, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. If you want to skip to this.
You want to, Laura, go to the, go to the, see where's the slideshow on the... You want to go over to the right?
Right, partner. There's, it's a matter of trying to figure out my mind, cursories.
We oppose, we oppose.
Oh.
Wrong, there's the rule here.
Can't see it on my screen.
Right.
Oh, it doesn't, no, right, sorry, yes.
Do you think, can we get a small blackboard bar?
I'll do a clip on the slideshow, make the slideshow, the actual slideshow.
We have it on our screen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Good?
Got it.
Okay. Like Tim said, my name is Nikki Conant. I'm a senior transportation engineer and project manager with Sbaggo Technics. Myself and my colleague Brad Lyon, who's our vice president of transportation engineering, are heading up this traffic study for Route 236. So like to mention, this is just kind of a brief overview to introduce our project to council and get some very initial feedback or questions. So I'm going to kind of go through basically what has been summarized, what was done to the past, what we're looking to do in the future, and then provide you guys the opportunity to weigh in.
Let me have a written...
That's the arrow we share.
So as was mentioned, Sbaggo had previously done a very extensive traffic study back in 2010. They looked at, at the time, who Brad, who was also a part of our team, was a part of the initial study. Yeah. Am I standing in the... No. No.
Nick is seated.
Okay. Um, so Brad was a part of that initial study and it was much more extensive. They looked at multiple different mitigation strategies for the traffic along Main Street. Looked at traffic demand strategies to try to alleviate traffic, looked at external kind of solutions. And it was a much more robust planning study. So we were contacted by the town, we wanted to look at kind of minimizing that scope, taking everything that we learned back in 2010 and basically updating it, but also looking at potential new solutions in a kind of orphaned dense area. So our traffic study is focusing on basically Main Street Route 236 from Dow Highway all the way over to Young Street. And so if you go to the next slide real quick. I'll kind of skip over the timeline, use, use of time being. Our goals for this portion of the study are really to update the information that we had before, but also look at more near-term implementation strategies that might alleviate some of the traffic issues that you're seeing today, both for vehicles and pedestrians through the corridor. We're also looking to review access management strategies. There's a lot of driveway openings within the area. Obviously, the school is right in the middle of our project scope, so looking at how that kind of all plays together along with the commuter traffic issues that you guys see during the peak periods. So we've kind of laid out a timeline for our study. August, we held a kickoff meeting with Jennifer and Tim. We're presenting the project kind of as an introduction to council. September, we're hoping to hold a robust public planning meeting so that members from the public and also business owners can come in and basically lay it all out there. We could listen to what their issues are, what they'd like to see from the study, and kind of adjusting for anything of importance for the people that truly live and work here. So after we kind of gather all of that data, we'll take that information back to some of our initial analysis data collection through the months of September and December, and then ideally delivering a kind of report at the start of the new year. So that's kind of the background information as to what we're looking to do, our schedule moving forward. And I'd love to open it up to questions or comments from the council for what our plans are.
Just one question that I have, do you guys have a date in mind for the public comment session? Anybody?
Probably the mall, I don't, I don't know, depends on what you, you know. So they've already been here one or two days and walked the streets and took pictures and made that. So they're going to do foundation board, so again, it's the beginning of it. We're hoping to have... Often, they'll just have to give me some feedback, we'll touch base around the end of the month and we'll have a better, like, first meeting September to do a better structure of that. I don't really have a good answer.
Okay, they didn't want to wait until school was in full session to start to check accounts. Okay. Will that be like a council public meeting or more like, is that something that we'll be running?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have, you know, people will be having public, like, public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. I'm excited to, I'm glad we're going to have a public meeting to get more input from, more to discuss. Anyone have any questions or...
Just a general comment, looking forward to getting up in information at the fall years. We generally get a lot of criticism about just doing study after study after study, but our implementation, so... But without fact base, slap off with, it's pretty tough to discuss golden strategy, so... You might hear some of that, why are we doing this again? But so it's important to have that updated fact base.
Yep.
And then we can hopefully make some reasonable decisions. One thing that, that we continue looking at is the last upgrade to two-state highways resulted in a slingshot at the intersection of Portland, of Main, for 42236. And I don't know if this is exactly out of that scope, but it would be kind of interesting to see if modification could be made to reduce some sort of traffic. We have to take a look now, because in the prior configuration, traffic did move a lot slower as it moved from this building to headed to a portal. Good luck.
Thank you.
On both ways across the street. Interesting.
I just have a quick question. I saw in the previous report that there were some, there was a conversation about potential funding options. Is that within scope of your update?
Yeah, I think that's something that will come naturally in discussions once we get some of the potential recommendations. We can kind of point, which we've already had some of these kind of background discussions. We can put you in directions for your potential funnel of funding sources.
So one of the things that we did stress this day, when you listen, both call the traffic study. What Nikki said, absolutely pedestrian safety study as well. I have some variability to improve pedestrian safety. So that at both levels, we'll talk to the business owners, we'll talk to the citizens. But the citizens need to know that the scope of practice is centered, centered around not only traffic mobility, but pedestrian safety, because that's a condition we get.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
We have four words that you all, yeah. All right, we're now at the public comment. So is there anyone on the phone or here in the room that would like to come in and meet in, at any, that's not on the event later? Thank you.
Yes, Patrick Clary, Penns Blains Hill. I'm in the transfer station. I keep hearing the rumbles about people bringing trash to our station. And I'm just wondering, is there anything moving on with dump stickers so that the South Row residents...
Yeah, well, so is that a name and... So, yes, we're looking at, right now, researching the possibility, trying to figure out where that would depend. I got a meeting tomorrow with the dump manager and the transportation director, I will go in. And then I'm hoping at the first meeting in September, to present some fact numbers to the board. So just a footnote, if you're absolutely right, and Dan's been saying that to me. So I went to the transfer station Saturday around, I get there around 1:00 o'clock. There are about seven cows in line, and I watched them, three or four cows, three cows in front of me had an empty place.
Yeah.
They were throwing out ads and they had an empty place as I watched, but they're not, they're not coming to me. So, you know, I, I know, we know it's an issue, we're working on it, trying to get the facts, I don't want to go out and have, you know, have empty, make mistakes. So, you know, as much as we're concerned about that, there are people who say, no, my God, I'm not going to stick her again.
I have an existing sticker already, so...
So just so the answer, yes, we're working on it, I hope that's something people September could...
I have my mirror tag.
And it may be that, we, we're, Laura's going to sit in on this, we're going to, when we get going, we're all going to sit in and try to figure out the best solution, put something to you. Hopefully, they accept, we can add anything.
It's the construction people are the problem, isn't it mainly the both?
Well, that's a second problem, that's a whole different problem. So remember, not until we get a sign, we're going to be putting up shawls. So remember, not until we get a sign, we're gonna be putting up show, the transfer station, thanks for bringing that up, is for residential customers. So within the permit, we're working on permit sticker, if John's having his kitchen remodeled and he wants to take his, tell this dump guy, well, you get to give him my sticker number or some way to figure that out so that guy can do that. We don't, we don't have an issue with that. John taking his kitchen debris at the transfer station. We have a problem with contract, the JP contractors and associates who are completely renovating Gus's house, who in the bid, put in the rehauling cost and then put it in the trailer and take it up by the transfer station dump and drop. And then that's increasing our costs. Remember, our hauling fees are about what? Twenty-six percent? Twenty-six percent? So it's not commercial use. It's not, commercial uses, you take, you did that removal, you know, the degree removal, and you did, and you haul the weight to rentals or to higher dozen. You don't take it to the transfer station. That's for the general residents of South Fork. So, yeah, we're gonna try to crack down on that, and that's what they say. You know, one of the things Dan said, he said that the, the solid waste dumpsters, they could use to go a week, so now we can't even go a weekend, and they're overflowing. It's that much. So we gotta, you know, and we're trying to be nice about it, but when we get everybody out of state and all the contracts, you know, it's free. Okay, we're gonna, you know, we gotta figure something.
Yeah.
Manage that one.
Ajay?
Andre Foria, Roya Road. One of the factors you might consider when you're discussing the dump people is there's a lot of people on the Tannic, a lot of cheap skates that don't register the vehicles' name. When I go over the 9 and 1 and it is, the hand you kind of drive in this town, you know they didn't go home, you don't. And they wanna be, I guess it's cheaper registering vehicle, but they wrap on main laws, the main citizens, they should get their registration in main, and then that would help to identify them as maybe a resident.
Right.
So they might want to consider how you set up the qualifications for the sticker or whatever it is.
Well, how the qualifications, and we talked, we looked at Robert, we looked at the town that has this. Essentially, you gotta either pay taxes or show residency or have a, have some kind of, you know, rent or, or something in advance. You gotta have something, something here. That would be the, that would be the, yeah. That's one of the things, I gotta, I don't wanna have a long conversation with Jay, Ma, or Dan, we gotta put it together and talk together.
And I just wanna continue the trash discussion. Melissa Costella, Woods Corner Room. I'm just, out of curiosity, do we view the transfer station as a public service or a public business? That's my first question.
Public service.
It's a public service.
Right.
So we've talked about raising the transfer fee rates. And I would love to say that the South Fork Transfer Station can only be used by South Fork residents because it is a public service to our town. However, to remain all-inclusive, we do allow other people from other towns and states to use our facility. So a simple solution, and this actually goes on in other places where tipping fees are incurred for whether you get rid of like certain wastes. Why can't we separate what our townspeople pay and what other people from other towns pay? For example, if I live in South Fork and I want to get rid of a mattress, it's $5. If you come to our transfer station and you want to get rid of a mattress, you're going to pay $20. That might shy away some people from coming to the transfer station without putting another burden, financial burden on some of the residents out here. Stop.
John Costella, Woods Corner Room. I think that the problem stems from that one. I've lived here almost 20 years now, and we used to build a little transfer station here where we needed to. And then it turned around to everybody needs to start paying for bags, and we turned it into a complete business. And once it caught on that people, whoever they want in the bags and purchase them, and go through there without any recognition of who they are, that's when the problem really began. But the problem also is that our town is now getting so big that when the transfer station was actually created years ago, it really wasn't built or meant to keep up with the capacity of the town that it is now. So that's also a major problem. And I really feel like if, if we're gonna continue to do the transfer station, the people who pay taxes in this town should be able to get rid of their trash as part of their taxes as well, instead of turning it into a business.
Any other, any other public comment?
Just a referral to the, the transfer station. It's not really a free outlet. There's a lot of tax grab money that goes into it at the beginning. And it's because it's so expensive that unfortunately residents have to pay.
And as Jen mentioned, in over this past year, the hauling fees that we as taxpayers are paying to haul all of the garbage from, whether it's from residents or from other people, those fees are really, it's a lot. It's really surprising, and it's gone up a crazy amount over the last year.
It used to be close to $10,000 to $11,000 a month. Now it's $16,000 to $18,000. And it's just to haul some stuff away.
Well, my question is, how much money are we making off of these bags? And?
We're not.
We're not.
We're not. Believe it or not, we're not.
How was that, I was adding a thing, when you buy five bags and they're almost $10, when you can go buy 30 bags for $5.
When, when it's costing us $18,000 to haul it every month. If you look at the cost of, and, and I got where you're coming from, because I hate paper bags. I gotta dumpster my house. I don't go to the transfer station. But if you look at the cost for employees, health benefits, everything we have there, the building, we're not making any money on anything. That's why taxpayers are still, you look at our budget, we're still putting taxpayer dollars into the transfer station. It's not self-reflection. We're not making any, we're not recycling anymore. We're still buying. We're not even recycling, we're still not recycling cardboard and paper crap because nobody buying it. It's cheaper for us to throw it in the regular bill. If we were paying, when we went down the last time, it was gonna cost us an extra $10, $10 a ton. If we were paying to have the paper haul away as paper instead of general trash. So nobody buying recyclables, it's what we have to, they said, I don't like it either, but if we didn't do the bag thing, that should work because we have to raise more money with them. What the transfer stations are, and being able to like all of them.
One last thing I noticed, Mr. James, you actually sparked one of the things that I wanted to make comment on. With, for, for a lot of people in the town of South Fork, the transfer station has become an inconvenience, whether it is because of the towners coming in and holding up lines and all that stuff. And what is it forcing our townspeople to do? Get dumpsters. So we have so many people that use waste management companies between JCO and, I could name five different trucking companies that I see on our roads every day. Now, what does that is creating? If we do not do something about getting our townspeople to go back to the transfer station, we are having one, two, three-ton trucks on our roads every single day collecting this material from dumpsters or trash pickup or whatever. When people have dumpsters on their property, they are less likely to recycle. I have a dumpster, I can throw anything that I want in this dumpster. Am I gonna go to the town and pay for it to get rid of the air conditioner? No, I'm gonna throw the air conditioner either in the dumpster or on a back road in, you know, out in Tannic or whatever. So we have got to determine a way to get our townspeople to go back to the transfer station because back in the day, that was an awesome meeting place for people who you would run into, who you would say hi to, get ketchup, blah, blah, blah. And what the transfer station has become is really determining our citizens from even going there at the first place.
All right, we're gonna move on to county and local court.
Good. Wonder. One of the highway department, Delmont Road was paved last Thursday, the bridge is downline.
It's paved?
Or it's being worked on.
Yeah, it's not on pavement yet.
No, we're probably gonna dig it up.
There's stuff happening.
Woods Corn Road, they're gonna be installing cross-holsters on West Street. And Streetsave and Streetsweeping will begin next week. Police department last week said seven arrests for accidents, 126 traffic stops, which fits a tour on Portland.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's just, that's just the last two weeks.
Yeah. So there's a new room that the chief belongs to. It's a new, they formed as the Southern Maine Police Chiefs Association. All the detectives in that are allowed to join. They met last week. And they discussed creating a Southern Maine Traffic Prevention Unit to work together with a lot of the people who interact here, interact with Kittery, other towns, so. And they also talked about interaction team of detectives where we have a large event, we can call in the detective, Elliot, Detective Kittery, they'll come in and help our detective and share the scene and do some of the work. So it's really positive. All the officers are working on their national accreditation training. Next year, police department will be switching firearms and pilot feature plant. On every other, all departments already done it. They're going from the 45s that we have to nine mil, because every other town around us has already got nine mils. They said the reason for that is because it'll be consistent with, with the other town we use. So for some reason, they're all on the scene and they're on a long ammunition, they're sharing ammunition, they can share. The high school, police department, fire department have met together around tabletop session for incident planning for school emergency response, and we'll be meeting on Thursday afternoon for tabletop. The fire department last week sent 16 calls. Here today, there's 253 calls. The most notable incident was they responded to the fatal vehicle crash on the floor in Berwick on Sunday, August 14th. We had 12 firefighters that were on scene. They worked the scene for four hours and doubled down. Rick Shute has been promoted to the rank of captain and training officer and his promotion effect on August 17th. He's now an open sentence position, and that's been posted with him department. The goal of having a process to fill that by September 12th. Both quarters in the last three weeks, there's six building permits. My know, she's been working on my hallmark fiction, Canada's Ordinances, which the Canada's Ordinance is not in on tonight. She's got a chance to finish it. It'll be ready for that meeting in September, so it'll be on the agenda then. And she's working with several professionals who have long, long standard violations to bring them into compliance. Planning has been working on Gray Hill Road. It's a five-block, ordinary base, southern region. She's been working on a sole file ordinance. That'll be complete September, the planning board. And she's reviewing the land use ordinance and process for streamlining school model, school model ordinances. Library for July, the book count was 2,279. I had borrowed was 2,995. End of the summer ice cream party, August 13th was big hit. Front tires have been fixed. They're leaking. The back ones need to be completed. Local autumn area, we'll be at the library September 6th and 7th for quick inspection moves. They're implementing the software. It'll be up and running on September 1st, so we can, all their stuff will be in and filed. They'll be at book sale on October and the dates to redetermine. Recreation, after the community, some roof was leaking in the end. The roof came back and fixing a piece of block that was not cut in the right spot. Simple thing. There's a new part-time opening for program for United. It's posted until this Friday. Been advertised, and this is gonna take the place of previous assistant recreation director. It is a part-time position. Jen will have an interview panel. They'll be with Nikki and they'll be completing interviews. Actually, the interview process, it'll only over the start on a new session in mid-September. The seniors, the senior side of membership renewal are happening right now. They have at least 15 new members and 200 plus are enrolling. And 65 seniors attended the launch in on last Wednesday. And they have one coming up next Wednesday for the later-day luncheon. Assessing property act stabilization program in the healthy. We received 50 applications so far. We expect to receive up to at least 300. Yeah, they've been, she's been working on the G.I.S. fabric company, have that almost complete. Downbar, she's got model three nomination papers to finish for down council. She received one back. She's had one issue for school board. We see one back. Received 4672 requests. And you want, want clerk to tell board about the automatic voter registration fees.
The state started working on this a year or so ago. Now there is an automatic voter registration. So if you go to one of the state branch offices and you do anything on the driver's license, you are given the opportunity to register and vote, which actually makes a lot of sense because you're already there with your ID, your residency, proof of citizenship. You can opt out and admit a future student, so you don't have to do it. But if you do it, everything comes through, and then the clerk registrars all get notifications through the system. We then download. We have the final say whether you go on the open list or not. That law has not changed. The registrar still has the final say. But we've seen the ID, we've seen the residency, and in the long run, it will be great. Come election day, the lines won't be as long for the registrar, so it'll already be homeless.
Good, thank you. Transfer station, a new race will be in effect on September 1st. They posted that up there. We've got a new sign that we ordered, where instead of resident dumping, we'll end up with Marshall dumping. We'll get that up in the next couple of weeks. The new janitor that we ordered for the dump they get on every year, the new, is now on the introduction. We hope to have that in two weeks. As of Wednesday, is gonna be on September 10th, at 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the bus garage. We'll have one person from our staff up there to help you on that. Finances.
The September tax bills have all been mailed out. We're getting some calls on that and some questions like we do every year. And we, I am still too willing, working on year-end due days, count reconciliations to prepare for the audit.
And I just wanna pump one on Jen, she worked and, and Linda, who worked really, really hard. And Heather, first off, Jen and Linda getting the year-end financial balance, that was a huge task. It was all keeping everything else moving. Balance any two walls of the new budget going into effect and coming out, finishing the old budget, and they did a great job. So, who was, you would, and Linda. And also the others were getting the back for what they looked really good. Other end, and I go, so do you, Jim, the cells announced his retirement. He'll work a, one, a couple more days in September. He's done. The outside position, we hired his replacement. Pete. Getch, Getcher. I'm gonna say Getch, Getcher, I guess. He was the, one of the head janitors of the M.A. FSA B35 school system. He's out there and come here and he's doing a phenomenal job. Jen is attending grant training tomorrow with Jen, Jeff, Topten, and Wyndham for our enforcement grants, which they can file for those with its clothes. I attended a meeting, one of the warmest meetings I ever attended in my life. I attended a meeting, DMT meeting on the Route 91, 236 traffic light upgrade project yesterday. Three hours I'll never get back in my life, to say. That means that the project's gonna award a direct grant in for about three and a half million. They're gonna be the lead contractor on it. The project's gonna start right around October 1st. The only thing they're gonna do this year, they'll do a lot of lockings and a lot of clearing of the land. The actual startup of the project is gonna be April 1st next year. They'll, they're gonna move and relocate 17 holes for CMT. They might have sent some little holes sometimes, we might see that. So they're not going to alter traffic. We have this very frank discussion about not altering traffic for the school buses, for the school system, who run on a bike system, getting the kids out. Seven to nine and three to six P M, so they're not gonna alter, but it's supposed to not alter traffic. They're not supposed to stop traffic, they're supposed to leave traffic flowing most times, that's in the end of the project.
So you say seven to nine and three to six?
Seven to nine in the morning and three to six in the afternoon. Um, they're not gonna, we shouldn't notice anything. This year, when they start doing the project, they're gonna keep it eleven feet wide travel lane. Contact completion date is December twenty twenty-three. I mean, December twenty twenty-three. December twenty twenty-three, sorry. Um, so one of the things, we're working with Jay on the. Oh, okay, all right. Uh, so we're left, we ordered, we opened the extra money we had, we ordered two traffic control blocks, you see on the side, fourth street. One going out, one coming in, or one to the left. Um, so the planning board meeting on last Wednesday, there was a motion made to adopt, and then it's a, uh. Small model ordinance required by D D P, but the planning board wasn't clear, so they made the motion. To send the ordinance to the folks, the agenda tonight. The ordinance is not, so it's a five, about a five-step process. It doesn't come here, it needs to go, the motion should have read that the ordinance needs to go back to main D D P. Uh, by September first to review for the changes in the planning board day. And D D P will look and get all their changes, and they get a whole two public hearings, then they send it back to the planning board, the planning board will be there changing, reviewing. Planning board will have the public hearing, at that stage, then the planning board can then send the document on to you guys, so they missed. Just made a, they set it wrong, it should have been going there. So we're gonna hold that on tomorrow, I checked the sales objects, I guess, nothing for you guys to do, or just tell me about it, because you brought it to our attention, I want you to know.
This, this might be too detailed at this stage, but we know whether or not this smaller ordinance will affect our M S ward. I mean, as well.
I don't have any information on that, I know, uh, what's the girl's name, small model?
Chrissy Grabbas, Jessica Johnson.
Yeah, she's involved in this whole girl, so, yeah, she's, she's not a taken the lead. So the state is doing this for everybody, and they sent the old draft ordinance out, Chris, you had the last. Uh, Tammy took a holder, they got it to the planning board, they made someone, they, they, pretty sure of the other night. They just made the wrong motion, so I just want to let you know. It'll come to you when it's on the problem, we won't see you on the other side. Um. So we talked about trying, we've got some ideas of folks to try to fix the problem. And the basic assessment is the acoustics here are not gonna get better because. We have to cover the walls, we have to sheetrock the walls to make the acoustics sound any better. Um, there are still people out there, can't hear, we look back and listen to the. Verbiage of the night, it's not really any better after the last meeting. Um, then we came up on the idea, Jen and Tyler had the idea. Detective was in the police station, so we talked to the police chief. Police chief said, we've got that conference room built, so. So this room here is five hundred and seventy-six square feet, the conference room, the police station, seven hundred and forty-eight square feet. Um, and has all the updated electronics, it has three TVs, it has a great game room system. It's all programmed, so that right now, the only group to choose it was small model group, that's it. He said, everybody, and we'll turn it off and use it. So my recommendation to the council is to buy your auto debt, to tell me, let's. Move the town council meetings and the planning board meetings and police station, they're all, they must be there. There's coffee pot, all the tables are there, um, all the pubs are right on the floors under your tables. It's all, the air conditioning is perfect, the acoustics are wonderful, there's three TVs, so. My recommendation to the council, I don't have any place on the school except upstairs in the same room. And, and I would say, you know, the police chief has made it very clear, they'll clear the back panel up, and there was twenty-five in face of the bus, the back line. Side of the road. I, you know, we gotta, it's a beautiful car, and when I use it, it doesn't make any sense to me, so I'll hope to get feedback from the council.
Well, there we can sign it, like, huh, well, no.
What sandwich board?
Yeah, are we gonna use the sandwich board over at the police station?
No, we're gonna give, give it to you. That's it. Yeah, so we'll advertise it on our website, we'll put the ceiling board out, we'll put up posters here. Um, so the other tab you have, the chief was looking to get a market sign and fit on any pit sign. So they could just write that's a decision on traffic safety, we can still have a lot. Well, that would be perfect, because we got a little extra money in capital, so we'll just get, we'll get a market sign, we can post all our meetings, we can post the planning board meetings.
You might wanna check for the sign mark, that's good, boys at high school cause some problems. So before we go, more of a big sign, we ought to.
No, it's not a big sign.
Even a small insert, we ought to check.
We will.
And I think they're fantastic, because I don't have to go downtown and leave them, so. Yeah, we can come out on any one, perfect.
Yeah, and, you know, it's very well set up, it's A D A compliant. You know, and they can set the locking system, so those are five thirty bolts that can. And there's usually a lock, plus the locks on the building, the security, if you need anything. I just, I think we went out and looked at it today, we measured it, Jen, anything more to?
No, I think it's a very good option, you know, we tried to make this room work, it must be.
We tried really hard.
Yeah, but despite all of our efforts, it's just not, to where we wanted to.
And it'll show off our new facilities to the town people who wanna come to the meetings.
Yeah.
It's a win-win.
Yeah.
And it's a win-win for everybody.
And we're only doing it four times, you know, basically, four times a month, all the. You know, so we're doing a workshop, and we wanna have a workshop at five thirty or something. We'll, we put the coffee on, we get cookies, whatever, we can, you know, we, we can make it a lot more palatable, I think, there. So.
I like that.
So we're good.
We're in.
So are you in favor of that, folks? Okay.
Any idea how big, how many people sit in the room?
Fifty, uh, fifty-five.
It's bigger than this.
It's bigger than this.
Or fifty-five, I keep thinking of brown and council. We had meetings, and all of a sudden, move on.
We can already move it there.
We can already move it, we need to. As long as we don't talk about fireworks, or else that.
Oh, that's.
Is it being more accessible, folks?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, that, that's A D A, fully A D A.
So for our next meeting, uh, the thirteenth of that next meeting will be a decision.
Yeah.
Yes, cool.
So on the charter. Says that town council shall, at first meeting, or as soon as possible thereafter, establish by resolution. A regular place and time for holding, if regular meetings. Do we need to do something official to do that?
And that's just a resolution, though. It's just a resolution, it's not either of the law, we have to change it, right? Frank, why, we're just a resolution, a revolution, I mean, if, if you wanna.
I think, I think that's more getting at, from how I read that, it's like, we can't go from like. Town hall, the police station, and we pop it back and forth, like, switch it up all the time, I think we sort of like, make it official, but we're now at the police station, maybe it may, let's say, whatever. I think we're coming.
We just have to remember that all town meetings still have to be here.
Okay, so like, public hearings are meant to be here?
No, county, the regional county, the state county.
Yeah, yeah.
June, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'll tell you. That's it, all I have for that.
Great, great, okay, thank you. Um, I finished this number one update on the state roads transfer.
So, uh, now Jen, I was talking to Jen, and Jen and Joe. And I, we didn't have this last time, and I don't know why they hit the queue. So this is part of the state law, the title twenty-three, and this basically says what happens to the roads, um. Well, we're gonna do what they're required to do. So, under municipal urban maintenance duties, winter snow, ice, move, water, bad, bad, knocking. Traffic signs, ditching driveway. All little things, tech basins, traffic signals, battery insulation, barrel sign. Um. Service treatments, including asphalt shimming, then always. Typically less than one inch thick, and do not prove the strength of the road. So we had a long discussion, and about that, and then the rest of the stuff. So, any major construction on the roads, they're still required to do, they're gonna do a lot of. Um. The, so I met with Jay, and Jay, and I met with Joe, and this is what Jay's giving. So by, they set up, they're gonna, they clean and inspect all the basins, inspect crosshokes and canter. Fix the sinkhole on Ford Street by the bridge, water problem, Main Street you gotta fix, pop hole Main Street. Um, and then two thirty-six repairing Friday. We talked about the bridge, I mentioned earlier, you guys said, no bridges. So I talked to Jay, he said, no, he said, we'll get across that bridge, we're gonna get to ninety-one, turn around, we can't turn around it. The other part of that is, we talked, Jay talked to the state, the state said, bridge isn't a problem. Only bridges of twenty feet of span or less, wouldn't have thousands, anything over twenty feet would be taken full, complete usage, and that's a ready grid. A bridge is sixty-seven feet, state said, it's not moving anymore. No matter what you do, we're not, you're not doing any of that bridge. So. Jay wants to propose to go to ninety-one and turn trucks around there, at intersection, not just to tie that. There.
If they own the bridge, then you can take my objection out of it, I just didn't wanna own the bridge.
Yeah.
But we're still gonna be clearing the bridge.
We're gonna do so. When there's snow, ice control, um, and he even said, he said, on that bridge there, on, on a span of twenty feet. The state does not hold it there. The state will not take through all that stuff, and he said, but that's a, a two-year-old bridge, I guess, they just fixed that bridge a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it's not that old.
So he said, but that's not your problem, the bridge is that problem, sixty-seven feet, so. I just wanted to give you the update on this, that's all, any questions?
I always have questions on this one.
Yeah.
I've, I've taken a look at the, the cracking in the road. Think of the section, Main Street, and, uh. By what metric? I'm not, I'm not tribute to, you know, what three point three is, or three point one three, or whatever the rating is for it. But from the. Kind of meatball engineer that I am, I know crack, I see it. I know linear crack, I know cross crack, I know alligator crack. And with seeing alligator cracks, and that generally means subgrade failure. Uh, and so before any thin set oval is should be placed on that, those deep faults. Should be cut out and repaired. And particularly where one crack goes over another crack, well, that becomes a third crack, that could try it out, that's our problem. Yeah, so I would just, uh, encourage our, our public works crew and the, the body who, uh. To take a good, hard look at that, and make sure that the requisite, either crack sealing or deep repairs are done. Because we're gonna see those cracks come through again.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, and so we put in the same thing, only it won't last as long this time.
Right, uh, I, I did pass that on to Jay, you know, I've had that conversation previously. And Jay talked to Joe, and Joe wasn't holding the wall above.
Of course not, he's playing.
Well, he, he was, he was more like, listen, you might get, you might get it open, and we'll give it, go next year, so.
And they pulled the same stuff on us when we did the middle show. I walked up and down the road myself, I bought half dozen cans of upside down tea. And I, I went out and we walked the road, because I, I said, this is nuts. Why are we paying the whole of these things to be known defective? And just, you know, waiting to come back up, and, uh, and yeah, they, they came back and fixed it. And the other thing is, if they, if they look straight edge across the lanes, check for right. What happens, you have tire marks going up the lane, you end up with this real lazy W. And if that's the case, in addition to the oval, it should be shimmed in oval.
Right.
Even now, it has started cracking in the middle with little rudders.
Yeah.
On tires. And, and this is just common sense stuff, but the history's a tough teacher sometimes, and, and they, they wanted to sob over this, say, people ready to go.
Yeah.
Ready to go, ready to go, and they weren't ready to go.
Yeah.
They wanted to, you know, what we see this time of year. And, and, uh, I went to a seminar once with someone from Virginia Transportation. Down there, they use a lot of five eights. Vex. It's paint, it's black paint, they call it election year paint. You see it a lot of times, so they make all roads black. And everybody's, wow, look at our roads, they're terrific, and you see the same stuff coming through next year.
Yeah.
On the year after, and, and so there's a push for that right now, because it's an election. And they wanna make a lot of roads black, and I guarantee you, that's why the work's going on on two, three, and six, they deferred. So anyway, that's just my piece, sorry for going off again on it, but.
Nope, I'll pass the assignment on the.
I got some special on my turn.
To Jay and then, then, you know, we'll get ahold of you.
Thank you.
I just wanna, wanna be, question for people in the public, um, there's a tool that's available online, the URL is main dot gov forward slash N D O T forward slash math viewer. And that provides, um, an overview of what the main department of transportation rates the roads as, so there's a field, they're called a P C R value. That's on a scale of zero to five, so if you're curious as to what our roads are rated, that's your tool.
Anything else on, uh?
Point, that's, that's it, I just wanted to give you an update, if there's no further questions, why don't you call me?
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, maybe this is number one, Paul Street Parking Lots. Um, so I can start off, probably I will contact, you can jump in.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think, from what I understand, um, a parking lot on Paul Street, um, that. In, historically has been. There was like a spoken agreement between our former manager and some tenants that they could park there, and this just starts, started, started twelve up recently with the police department. To enforce traffic control, parking, and so on, and so, uh, I'm assuming that you're Karen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I, I definitely wanna give you an opportunity to speak, but Tim, is there anything else that you want?
Oh, so Aaron, Aaron Paul, Dr. Jenner, and Wyndham, Ken, mostly handles, have Carol, the guy over there.
So just for a little bit of context and history here, um, back in nineteen ninety-seven, the town had a special meeting and bought that piece of property. Um, leveled the piece of property that was there, and should make extra parking, about ten spots. Um, to be able to reach the downtown area. And I also put in the ordinance and a picture of where, um, tenant property is, at ten Ford Street, another parking lot she's been using. So when she called me, um, you know, she was concerned about her tenants were getting ticketed, and we talked about the ordinance ahead of time, in place. Um, that's what she told me about, you know, the advantage of a former, um, tenant, Jen. That's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, because if we're gonna change an ordinance, it needs to be adopted by council. So I'll let Karen speak now, how, uh, her tenants.
Before you speak, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I just wanna make it perfectly, by the way, so the reason it's, I'm sitting in here, Jen, tonight. Um, Jen talked to me about it, I as a manager don't, don't have authority as, you know, wave ordinances. Or, or to change any of the spoke of your halls, I administer them, I don't change them. So, under the fact that there was a verb. I can't dispute it, but she said it was a previous agreement between the manager and her for facility. Um, my only answer was bring back people, that's why it's here.
Karen, you?
Hi, um, I own ten Portland Street, I own it my husband, I have, uh, working professionals and an older, um, woman who are my tenants. They've been my tenants for, uh, several years now, I've owned the building since two thousand fifteen, I did get to go, and my third paragraph, it says two thousand five, but it's two thousand fifteen. Um, you know, with the real estate agent, the previous owners, and the town that recently was kosher. Um, so it's never been a problem that I've had to deal with, obviously, moving or a rental. Um, or property, an investment property, um, that's one of the things you're concerned about is, and it being right downtown. I asked over and over again, and again, it hasn't been a problem, um, a couple of weeks ago, my uncle was. I've seen text messages from the tenants, my husband and I are the property managers, so I, we take care of everything, we're very advanced on the, the property and. Take care of the tenants, um, as best we can, so that's why I'm here, I'm advocating for them. Um, I personally, if I were living in that building, I would prefer the Paul Street lot, you know. Opposed to the post office or the lot behind the building here of, the library, I'm not sure if it'd be that good. But, um, I just for the safety concerns or traffic concerns across the street, so I'm here just asking for some help or guidance as to how I could find safe, affordable, um, parking.
Um, currently, the Paul Street law is two hour parking, six AM to midnight.
Yes.
And, uh, so how does that affect your?
They've been, I'm sorry, they've been managing, I haven't had any, um, calls from the town, the police or from my ten of parking, it's just.
Could, and the react, you already mentioned getting texts and things like that, were they reacting to enhanced enforcement?
Yes.
Or, or lax enforcement?
That's the one here, so what did they have, was, excuse me if I may, just a second, the last meeting, you said, we talked about Paul Street overnight parking. So we sent video, said, okay, they're, apparently, this overnight parking, one of Paul's athletic concern, and apparently, that's what happened, and you started being, your tenant started getting tickets.
Yes, yeah, and maybe for the thirty day, the no, trying to.
So I, I stopped at the thirty day, I told Jay, stop for a second, where there's a verbal agreement somewhere, whatever, let's, when we get it to you folks, and you folks choose your own.
And, and Jack, I think there was a previous agreement between our former manager and Karen, that their tenants would park in the Paul Street lot overnight.
That's a legal agreement, that's a pleasant whole. That down, that now is not?
No, I, I know, I just wanna, I, I was sure you were not changing the system, yeah.
Well, there's also been cars that disabled, someone worked on, left there, I mean, Chris coming to all that.
I, 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 I can go back seven years with, with complaints about Paul Street, with cars being there, cars being there over months, with snow on. Um, town trying to, uh, we've had complaints for the seven years I've been sitting here, from residents of Paul Street about that parking lot. Being used for storage parking lot, now, I'm not saying it's your tenants at all, because everybody uses them. Uh, you know, former people that lived on Paul Street use it a lot, I know aren't in there. Uh, but that's been a complaint from Paul Street residents for seven years I've been here. Um, this has been brought, again, to our past manager, I don't know why, why now, I can't speak to that as a guest. Dark fire.
One, okay, uh, one possible alternative here is to convert some, and again, this is hypothetical, it's not a proposal that's something considered. So we can convert certain number of spaces in the Paul Street lot to permanent parking, very similar to what we have for the, uh, Young Street municipal lot. So it's twenty, suppose twenty spaces on Young Street that are available for permanent, permanent parking. We have to be, and this is me forward thinking, because I keep getting told on the council, we gotta think forward. We have to be very careful going down that slope, because eventually, we're gonna get putting a light downtown in this town. When we put a light downtown, we're gonna eliminate parking places. We have restaurants and businesses that are open until seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. Those ten spaces are gonna be extremely valuable when we lose six or eight out front of the town. And again, I don't.
I just think, can I see through that plane?
Yes.
Just like, I don't know, right?
So, and, and, and we also have to be very careful, because we have, and we went through this last year with Snowman, we have apartments on Academy Street. That don't have off-street parking, and if we start making concessions in one area. What's gonna stop the owner of that apartment complex from coming to us and saying, well, you made this concession here, why can't I have it? We should have, we got a lot of things to think in, in the piece of.
Where's, where's the town law of the areas?
There, there isn't one, but we're allowing them to use a town lot. That was, that, that lot was bought in nineteen ninety seven, the house was demolished, the parking lot was built.
Oh, we're allowing that?
Exactly, right, so you would be allowing, so we're wrong with that, we just have to be very careful going down that path, if we made six designated spots, even to be charged. You just gotta be very careful how we. This, this is, this is very bright for dichotomous key, you know, the, the yes, no diagram, we use, if yes, go to here, if no, go to here.
Decision tree, decision tree, yeah.
Yeah, and so, that, because this, this is a lot of stuff that even last ten minutes, point of view, point of view, point of view, point of view, as a therapist.
I was just gonna ask you. Um, one of the very first questions people ask when renting spaces, where's the parking? And that's just current day, uh, mine's that people don't wanna walk for several reasons, um, one is convenient, second is for safety. Um, if I cannot find a way to provide parking for my tenants, it's going to hinder, I believe, a pool of potential, um, tenants. It's gonna be hard to fill those, um, for.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, being a tax payer, the thing, that fair, when you bought that property. We opted to do that to support all our residents in town, not just unfortunately, the residents here in Parker Building. The other side, when we go to winter storm, snow removal, those cars were a lot, those six park, parking spaces were there, and that parking lot becomes a nightmare, move selling, small ice. So again, I'm just, again, there's nothing, I'm just looking at everything we have here, and I. I know what contention that was in nineteen ninety seven to buy that property and make parking, it was a thing to do to this town, for sure.
So no, no, parking, uh, facility for those tenants?
I don't, no, it's, there's no parking, it's word surrounded by the links of history.
Yeah.
There's no, yeah.
So just from my knowledge, you know, what are we, what are we talking about for that, your offer, what are you offering for apartments, are they two, three bed? Two, two bedroom apartments, three, three bedroom apartments, what are we, that?
I have, so I have the tattoo shop, which that's, I'm not worried about that, that's part of our danger. Um, I have a loft that houses two people, I have another two bedroom apartment that houses a couple, and then I have another two bedroom apartment that houses, um, a senior. But there, there's two, two bedrooms, and then there's one loft.
We're looking at. Maybe power over there, I, I, I wouldn't be saying I got six cars, potentially.
Yeah, essentially.
Um, all right, cool, um, and then, as I look at the map, uh. The, the tattoo shop, so the customers are coming and going, the workers, where are they parking throughout the day?
They park on the street, they put their cars there, and then have a fresh shop, yeah.
And how is your relationship with, uh, two businesses, or is it just, um, Jen's shop?
I actually reached out to Jen to see if she could help, um, but it hasn't moved forward.
Yeah, and so I know that, um, for me, when I go down there, uh, it's not where the Jen shop was I parked. Or if they did, if they're shopping like that, I, I went to the road.
Yeah.
I use Paul Street when I'm going to, uh, New Branks maybe, or to the, so. Yeah, have any conversations happen there, I have no idea how it's happened now.
This just arose like two weeks ago, so the only person that I have spoken to was Jen. I was going to reach out to the plans, but with the proximity of, um, the parking spots, who does choose my purse?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, um. So right now, the town needs to take it there, we know the cost that, that it takes to file that. And then, and then also, I'm just trying to think of the town in that, financially, but then also legitimately. If we have a town, another opening parking, how does the logistics of that work with Jay, as far as organizing? Making sure that we are safe and profitable, our.
I talked to Jay about this, Jay said, it's been a problem, if we, they try to be trouble, and do the best they can, and try to get in there, clean it up after. Been a trouble, all over my parking lots, it's probably just, just like, so, trying to get in there, you know, I think that's, that's a logistical issue that. Isn't, that really at the top of what's, I guess, maybe, you know, we can, if, if, whatever you decide, we can figure out how to get bottom, same.
Um, so since this came through just on my, I don't need to capitalize, I'm just trying to get you guys to work on, I think, even then, driving through. It really does seem like, do I, I, do I, anyone that's dealing with this problem? Um, because as I cruise through, it seems like everybody else either had a parking or had some sort of option. Um, so with all that said, I feel you're right, and I understand where you're coming from one hundred percent. Personally, I, I, I'm right with John. I don't think that we need, we should be into the business of changing things. When we dealt with this last meeting, talking about, um, we categorize the road. Just because someone came in, I, I think that we need to think twice about that, it's a setting of precedent, I don't think we want these settings. Um, but I do think that, um, one of the great things this town has right now is we've got. As you saw, we have a, a transportation study going and action actually happening, and then we have a new police chief that's focusing, and a new time, time manager that's focusing on. Traffic safety, that's what you say, and then we had just hired our, uh, developer, who's going to be booking at the title of having. Potential to just be down here, who's going dramatically altering change from what the town looks like, so I, I think that there are some really good things coming. No longer, maybe not, and that's not, but I do see some benefits coming to help, at least to park in the future, but, again, they don't want us to get on my soapbox, that was, that's just.
Sure, um, as a potential counterpoint, uh, it seems to me that we have stipulated hours to parking in Paul Street. We have stipulated hours for no parking, in the law. And it seems like there's been some prosecutorial discretion, applied over the last number of years, and say, okay. This seems to be working, so we're gonna choose not to enforce those, and I, and there's good reason to do that. If there is demand, for other things, like you mentioned, business that has people transit, you know, getting out. Year or whatever, coming in and out, well, then that might be an opportunity to revisit. Or simply let it go the way it is now, if there's no other demand for those ten parking spaces. But at the point where there's demand by others, then your tenants are vulnerable. Because the other people who would wish to park there, would say, well, why are these people parking more than two hours? Cause that's what it's rated for, and they're parking there because it's convenience to do so. We did the parking study in two thousand fifteen, and we found that there's adequate parking spaces around them, it's just not right outside the back door. The people who live in apartments downtown may have to walk. Longer distances, they'll drop off the grocery, pick it up, and go someplace else, so I'm afraid that's what we're up against right now.
So that's a no to problem solving? And, and in your future?
They don't see what is a way we can problem solve, we have an ordinance in place, it's now being enforced. For whatever reason, it wasn't enforced before, whether it was Perry and the past, uh, police chief, again.
So I guess, how do, um, bigger cities like Portsmouth, where they have like, where the Will Wall parking lot was. Um, they have reserved signs from like, for just name parking only, from like eight PM till, I don't, when?
A lot of those are purchased by that landlord, or by the business owner.
Not rented?
They, they could be rented by the landlord, on, on a.
So is that something that, and that's what you were kind of hoping to in the future?
So I'll let you finish and then I'll.
Yeah, I, I think that there are, I, as far as in the future, I, what I was saying is, I, I think that the downtown's potential to change. Get safer in pattern, um, some safe parking for your, for your tenants. I don't, I don't know anything about how like Portsmouth runs, or how, or how a arrangement like that would work. Uh, so I wouldn't be able to, I would, number one, to talk with, like, say, all right, Tim, how does this all like play together, or whoever needs to talk, that would. Be where I would ask for that conversation.
So I guess that's what I would be asking for, is because like you said, my property is on like a little island with no. Like you can't just take one half of our on that property, if you wanted to, um, to rent something from the town, because I probably will be calling around at this point to. Um, private property owners to see if they have any parking.
I think honestly, the zones would be your best bet with the parking lot protocol here. My only problem with renting these parking spaces there is it's already limited to ten spots. If we rent you six, which is what we put in your email to us, we've just taken out fifty percent of the potential parking lots and businesses downtown, and if. If that intersection gets changed, the way we've seen possible plans, parking in front of Oddfellows and the Tattoo Shop, go away. So now, if we wanna keep those businesses viable, they need somewhere for those people to park, if your tenants are there. At least give you six spots, that means they're there all day.
No, I'm asking for just overnight parking there.
Overnight, so you see, then, if you get in the gray area, if they have a day off, or they have to go over to the car.
Well, if, if I lived in New York City, and I would have to get out with my car by six, seven AM, or I would get ticketed, or, or I park on this side, or on Monday is this side, or on.
Well, we don't have that, we don't have a police force to do that.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just telling you my background in terms of my own parking experience.
I, I'm sure, and, and I think, I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm open to anything, I just, I don't wanna take early tent parking places right downtown. Uh, and I, the other thing, I wanna make sure, when we're talking safe downtown, uh, back and forth, we're talking crossing the street, right? Not safe as far as nobody's worried about getting bugged, right? Because here, we're in a safer town, it's a safe name. I just, I know what it means, we're talking traffic crossing, with people worried about.
That's what I was alluding to.
I just wanna make sure that it's clear to the public, we're talking about traffic crossing, and that's it for the safety concern.
I was alluding to that.
Okay.
But also, as a female walking at night, you didn't have your own set of gears, but that's it. Have the, um, so even, so six is too many, I would even put three, three out there to think about renting just for overnight from, let's say, eight PM to six AM. Just so they don't get ticketed, um, and I would obviously rent those for the town, but again, I will. Do my own due diligence and reach out to private owners, such as, I'll reach out to Jennifer again, and I'll reach out to the ones again, to see, um, what's up. So, and unfortunately, if I can't find any parking, it's probably going to be a big problem in terms of the tenant pool, um, that I'm. That wants to live there.
Now, as I know, there's a weird, weird ask here to change, uh, either we wanna change the ordinance or leave it as is. And I don't, I don't think that, since you can't come back to, 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 with some sort of item that you guys could maybe. Put in front of us, more, you know, sort of, kind of.
Yeah, this is just an initial.
And you're seeing, uh, and I, and it's out, you know, our town council meeting, nothing, maybe talk to the, uh, another plan, maybe.
Right, if you want, if you just, if you just stay a little, stay in your act right now, just move on, keep the back center or something, you know, just sell. Right now, we're just sitting in a, you can't, or.
That's what I, I guess that suggests.
Agreement that I can't verify, but good will of the town. Because she made, you know, she said that happened, and then, I like it, if she were the only one, I would tell you. Probably have a different feeling, but, I mean, if we heard that, that attention was, people can answer, well, I haven't figured a previous thing. So, that being said, now, we asked police about, kind of, a slide for a minute, so we can figure this out. It's a reasonable idea that there's a, like, after a comeback, check things in September or something.
I was going to suggest that, that we put this on our agenda for our next meeting or the meeting after. Our pitch is really, one for myself, I feel like I kind of just want a little time to think about this, and I, I'd love to find out, like, what, you know, is, is Flynn's an option, is Jen an option, you know, what other options might be out there? Um, and then, essentially, take, if that's information, I feel like I, I can, so.
From my understanding, Jen doesn't own the building, so I would have to. Yeah, personally, yeah, I'm not. Yeah, I'm on top of it. Yeah, I'm just my owner, so, all right, so, okay.
Smalls off of these ones.
And Chair. Two people wanting, and Jen, I'm a comment. I really sympathize here, we're a parking issue. But to buy a piece of property, you should make sure you have a parking with the property. And now you have an ordinance out of set. I don't really feel like we should be feeling fully level, so I'd say.
All right, so we'll, um, do you need your motion or this is the next data now? Well, we'll, um, bring this up at a future meeting, and then Karen, let us know. All right, uh, we'll move on to number two, sales for closed property. So, um, something we have a for closed property, um, number at zero, zero, three, dash, three, seven, dash, A, dash, zero, zero, zero. Um, we have some parties that are interested in purchasing it, um, free acre lot. Um, on Bennett Road, number three, sixty-seven, and according to our code of counsel, we have, um, some options. We can, I'm trying to remember. We can repurpose property or dispose the property by selling it. As a, as a summary of the options, I think we have a, um, except I know that you have recommendation on, on this.
Yeah, so, I don't know what it is, but suddenly you have a bunch of interest in the property. Um, and it's a, it's a, it's not a.
Center.
Center, so, um, you know, kind of ran it by a bill. That's what, this has been a proposal since, oh.
Here's.
So I don't know what, all the excitement is about it right now, but whatever it is, it is. So please, as soon as we just tell it, go ahead, move in, those are still public bins. I do my, I think, motion to solid down all those downtown managers, sell property by, uh, public sealed.
I'm not that.
We're one of them, did, uh, sixteen, excuse me, sixteen, three, forty-one, four.
Thank you. This, is that involved with public bins that we advertise? Public.
Yeah.
That's all I want to think about.
Any comments, questions from council?
Um, assessed value, had that gone through revaluation?
Um, I don't know if it was reassessed, that is the current value plus the past taxes.
Okay, but we're not sure, the, the new assessed value.
As practice, Karen, we. On with the, uh.
This one, this one, I'm, yeah, I just, we have, we, we have under, uh, chapter A, one twenty-eight, dash two disposal. We, it states we made a reasonable effort to reconcile this with previous owner, that's not happening, correct? Right, and those, we are, we are. Yes, and then, on a motion to ours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, steps of this, town refers off the tax quiet property to last former owner on a decision now back tax address, lean class, and a temporary tax that paid full. So we done it ten days after foreclosure date, that's all last. Then we have, like, five options. One is public sealed bins, uh, sell property to the owners, town ownership. The town makes use of this goal as a tax quiet property to a public auction. Uh, and choose to donate, sell the tax quiet property for less than the current assessed value of qualified conservation organization described in I R C, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so what we're, what we're talking about right now is, is, uh, for public auction. So we're.
Public, public sealed bins, number one.
I thought it was a public auction. What is it, public sealed bin or public auction?
Public sealed bin, yeah.
Okay, so that's one.
And the assessed value from twenty twenty to current has gone up from twelve-four up to fifteen thousand, if I understand correctly.
So the, the, uh, the, the mid document, we did state all these minimums.
Yes.
So I, I, I want to offer a motion that, uh, to put the subject property off the, as described, uh, pursuant to, uh, chapter A, one twenty-eight, tax quiet property, under the provisions of, uh, section A, one twenty-eight, dash two disposal, uh, A, one. Okay, so just for the record, map slash lot, zero, zero, three, dash, thirty-seven, dash, A, dash, zero, zero, zero. That's the description property. Yeah, it's, it's basically the same as what the suggested action is.
Give a second.
Second, Madam Chair, we have a question.
Yes.
Oh, it's a, this is on Bennett Road, yes?
Yes.
How far in is it? Bennett Road is not a townable road, is it?
It's not.
No. They tried to do that before. How far is it in? Is it way in?
It's, it's so long, I don't know how long it is.
Yeah, 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 someone, the deterrent is if someone buys it and they can build a house and things, that's, I'm just, I don't know. Don't worry about it.
That, that is a good consideration, because it is, it's not a, a townable way.
Yes, and it, it tried, the, um, residents have tried in the past, you didn't pass.
Yeah, so, as long as people have eyes wide open.
Yeah, there's probably something included in the, like, packet, I guess, that is not, not.
The two parties that are interested, um, own property extremely close, one is a buyer and one is just a piece of property in between. Oh, that would be hopefully.
Okay, any other examples, the council? All right, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion back to side zero. Uh, next we have uncollectible property tax, where you have.
Yeah, I'll move to write off uncollectible taxes on order of uncollectible taxes the tax year two thousand nineteen in the amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, second.
Your motion is second, thank you, uh, just, I was forgetting my bearings a little bit on this, so we're going to MRSA thirty-sixth section E, before we end up the, the, um, we have the ability to write off, even, even what's on taxes. Any questions on this? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any votes? Motion back to side zero. Next, or your business uncollectible personal property tax, very similar.
Madam Chair, I move to write off uncollectible personal property taxes in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three dollars, with two thousand seventeen tax year.
Two. Aye, oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, no, we should be doing two separate motions, I'm assuming.
Do we need to most of the free tax here?
Unless you state specifically the yearly amount, which, do that.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to write off uncollectible personal property taxes, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three dollars from two thousand seventeen tax year, two hundred and four dollars and forty cents for the twenty twenty tax year. Identify the property. Uh.
That's, um, four thirty-eighteenth street, eighteen Portland street, two sixty-seven eighth street.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any votes? Motion back to side here. Uh, next we have possible action on properties, I don't think we have any support for this one, right? Public hearing, oh, oh, okay. All right, so we had a public hearing earlier, uh, for chapter sixty, building construction, some amendments specifically to, uh, section six, dash, three, additional requirements, the, be scheduled, uh, and there's several different, uh, changes to these that we, that we will need to adopt at this point after our public hearing. Any, any discussion or anything on that, from our very exciting public hearing?
Uh, how, how would move to, uh, I guess, we're having, start these a while. That would refer to the documents on the table.
Refer to the document on the table.
Has, refer to the document as presented.
Yeah.
That, that was presented by the, to the public, as public hearing. So if you refer to it as a presented document, that refers back to this, are you okay with that?
Okay, so I'm going to move to amend chapter sixty, building construction. pursuant to information presented on August, on third, two thousand and two, public hearing, and the documents on the table for the. Sorry.
Your motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any votes? On the side here. Awesome, uh, all right, council member comments, Jeff?
I have one, thank you.
All right, uh, we're, the Co-Press and Plan Committee was invited to participate in last week's planning board meeting, which was about, um, ordinance changes required by the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two general permit for stormwater discharges for the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS Force. So we, I have, um, I mean, Jeff was in attendance to, to have, um, but we sat down to talk about low impact development standards, which to mention earlier tonight, um, that's something that's kind of rearing its head in the years to come. Um, the planning board during that meeting also chatted about, um, potentially forming a joint working group with the town, with members of the town council, if they wish to join, um, to chat about L D two thousand and three. So as that moves forward, they'd like to work with us as a, as a team, and I'm just mentioning that informally during my council member comments. Um, you know, as it pertains to L D two thousand and three. Just a quick note that school is starting for M S D thirty-five next Wednesday, Berkeley Academy also starts next Wednesday, and tomorrow, the Seacoast Christian Academy starts, uh, with this, so just be aware, a little more covered up there. Uh, John?
Uh, just make sure to give a thanks to Jay in the morning. The ditches look good, the fields, the mowing around town is absolutely fantastic. Um, what we're saving and what they're doing is great. And also to Chief Ruder and the rest of the police department, the amount of stops and the enforcement out here on the streets, and others, thank you.
And I got a message from Chief Ruder, the council. So, uh, three weeks, the lone police officer who was out on, uh, duty.
Acting duty.
Acting duty, will be returning, coming back. And for the first time in many, many years, they can remember, Chief Ruder can remember, because of the support of the council, the labor contract, and the new position, the software, the staff, complete. So, he wanted to pass it on, said thanks for the support, the labor contract, that that certainly helped. Um, he's got a daddy who, the last opening, um, he's been a police officer with one for it, so he won state. Didn't work out, he went to go out back, he moved in, doesn't have to go to the academy, won certified. And they're reviewing him next week, and she said, if everything works out, we'll be the whole staff by September. First time since he can remember.
That's great.
That's, he's a woman, that's a.
Yeah.
I'll share John's comments while the moment, uh, the, particularly the monument, uh, is really, really good. Even in the, I understand the water down there, but that, that, that one looked very, very, but I continue to remove guide sale signs, and I just wanted to make a public comment for anybody that might be listening, that by ordinance, this is, like, some internal, it's, 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 uh, set aside, it's not a public picnic area or anything like that, so that, I think it says in the actual code that, that, that advertising bullet signs, the I C L signs are not permitted on, on those screens. And, uh, so I just wanted to ask for public's help to cooperate and not put the I C L signs up. It is loose by far, it's, you know, the law. The other question I had was for the, I don't know the L D on it, but the new law that affects, uh, residents over sixty-five with a ten-year, uh, homeowner, there's a ten-year homeowner.
I have L D nineteen, I twenty-three year.
Two ninety. Two ninety.
Two ninety.
I'll eat the nine. And, um, just curious, as a person who fits that demographic, what's the effective date of that law?
Uh, I want to go back.
I believe it starts next tax year.
Well, the application is two. Application is due by December.
Okay, so that, I just wanted to bring that out to the public that.
Yeah, the application is due by December, or take, now, I want to go back.
Uh, I want to say July.
Obviously, is that what you reported out earlier? Remember, trying to applications.
So as long as you're fifty-five by December?
Sixty-five.
Ah, too bad. I say, I know that.
That's accurate.
I agree. Uh, no, good, thank you very much.
Do you want to? Uh, conference and plan meeting Monday at six. I don't know.
Where are we going to be?
Hey, guys.
Well, it is on this, so at what point do we?
Well, next month, so we'll finish up August here and then September, go over there.
Okay.
So you guys can just share that, or they come in with a, that next, yeah, that.
Yeah, that was part of the plan, in terms of having that be a public space, additions were loose, ready. Because the doors are lockable for the rest of the station.
Right.
The restrooms are accessible, I mean, it was part of that plan that would give.
Chief was very open to it, and very, it's like, and, and sits there empty multiple times, and says, I got something to have, I'm watching that. Yeah, he said, the, you know, the, water grid, the, the stormwater grid, he said, he said, watch them out, but he said, nobody there, and he thinks, well, nothing, so.
It's high time, uh, many years ago, when we, you know, took over the, uh, that means no payment at the town part of that, we created a hearing center over there, and at that time, Jerry Fisher was sitting at this table, the table upstairs, said to the folks, let's wear this place out. For this, it's town, a town facility, let's use it, and, uh, let's have that simple. That's what we'll use, so I think we should stop wearing that remote.
Yeah.
Because, because it is a superior alternative.
It is, it's exactly what it's designed for, we're just sitting here, spinning over.
Chair, I move to you, Chair, a second.
Just hold on a second, um, so one thing I just am thinking of, before this meeting, I will, too, there, like, there's might be. There, like, there's, might be, like, some, they might need to reach out to somebody potentially. Barbara and I, maybe we're all going to go to training where we're at, we do the summer, things are there, all right, all right.
While you have wifi.
Just about, I don't have to set the warm up for it.
Right?
We'll go on to. Tell you.
Um. We can figure that way for a while.
What?
One, if we need like two owls, one for here, one for.
I have considered maybe one.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion.
And second.
So during, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? We're adjourned, thanks everyone.
Can we have a walkthrough up there so we know where to sit?